November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty, I'd like to welcome you to the Fitchburg City Council meeting. Please be advised that FATV is conducting audio and video recording of this meeting for public broadcast. And I'd like to ask Counselor Fleming to please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Counselor Fleming, I believe you are muted.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Counselor Fleming. Madam Clerk, if you could conduct a roll call.
The following counselors have logged in and are present at tonight's meeting. President Kusmerik, Counselor Boishman, Counselor Kucher, Counselor Gina Tally, Counselor Fleming, Counselor Green, Counselor Schultz, Counselor Squallion, Counselor Van Hazinga, Counselor Walsh, and Counselor Zarella.
And with the motion for suspension of the rules relative to remote participation, Counselor Zarella.
Move that we suspend all rules of this body or of our parliamentary authority that are in conflict with either the remote participation format or the state guidelines on remote participation during the COVID nineteen pandemic.
Second. I have a motion and second, we'll take this by roll call vote. Madam Clerk.
Counselor Fleming?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Squallion?
Yay.
Counselor Van Hazinga?
Yes.
Counselor Walsh? I'm sorry, could you say again?
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Zarella?
Yes.
President Kusmerik?
Yes.
Counselor Boishman?
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Kucher?
Yes.
Counselor Gina Tally?
Yes.
That is unanimous.
Uh, next, public forum. Uh, the public has been advised to contact the office by noon today regarding any comments of not more than two minutes. And the following, there, uh, there have been none that have been brought to our attention. Uh, and with that, um, we have a, uh, report from the, uh, Appointments Committee, which met earlier this evening and took up the following three matters. There were two new appointments, uh, for the Fitchburg Council on Aging. The first for Ms. Bonnie Howdala, term to expire December thirty first, two thousand and twenty-two, and the second for Ms. Michelle Moran, uh, term to expire November first, two thousand and twenty-three. Those were both, uh, adopted unanimously. And, uh, the next appointment was for the Director of Facilities, term to expire November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, Russell Carlstad. And that too was adopted unanimously.
Motion to approve the report.
Second.
I have a motion and second, uh, to approve the report. Uh, speaking on the motion.
On the motion?
On the motion, Counselor Boishman.
Uh, on the Director of Facilities, can we pull that out so I can vote separately on that?
Uh, Counselor, we already have a motion and second. So we can take this by roll call vote, um, or if you'd like. If you'd like me to take this by roll call vote.
Go ahead.
All right, uh, so, Madam Clerk?
Counselor Fleming?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Squallion?
Yay.
Counselor Van Hazinga?
Yes.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Counselor Zarella?
Yes.
President Kusmerik?
Yes.
Counselor Boishman?
No.
Counselor Kucher?
Yes.
Counselor Gina Tally?
Yes.
That is ten to one.
Motion carries and congratulations to our two new members, uh, of the Appointments Committee. And I want to thank, uh, Ms., uh, Michelle Moran for, uh, for joining us, the Appointments Committee. And I want to congratulate, uh, Mr. Russell Carlstad, um, as our new Director of Facilities and thank him for his, uh, his time and, uh, joining the committee earlier this evening. Congratulations to them all. And next on the agenda, we have a report from the Committee on Records. Counselor Squallion?
We have reviewed the records and they appear to be in order.
Motion to accept the report?
Okay.
I have a motion and second. Um, speaking on the motion, seeing if we do not have any objections, we'll adopt this by unanimous consent. Any objections? Accepted. Uh, next, we have, um, communications from His Honor, the Mayor. We have four letters of communication. The first three are for letters of appointments concerning, um, uh, staff members of the city, Ms. Susan Davis, to be reappointed as Director of Human Resources, term to expire December thirty first, two thousand and twenty-three. Uh, Mr. Thomas Skarowski to be reappointed as Executive Director of Community, uh, Executive Director of Community Development, uh, term to expire November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three, and Ms. Joan Goodwin to be reappointed as Executive Director of Council on Aging, term to expire November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three. And, uh, the fourth letter of appointment, uh, is for Ms. Megan Donahue to be appointed as a member of the Fitchburg Historical Commission, term to expire November first, two thousand and twenty-three. Those all stand referred to the Appointments Committee. Uh, next, we have Orders Finance. Uh, we have three items, two twenty-nine, two thirty, and two thirty-one twenty. Uh, and those all stand, um, referred to the Finance Committee. Orders Other, uh, before us this evening, uh, Counselors, and I believe there is a request for suspension of the rules on, uh, all four items, uh, three of which concern the New View, uh, two thirty-two, two thirty-three, and two thirty-four twenty, uh, all concerning, uh, the New View Affordable Housing Corporation project. Uh, I would ask if we can have a motion for suspension of the rules on two thirty-two up to and including two thirty-five twenty.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and second, uh, we'll take this by roll call vote. Madam Clerk.
Counselor Fleming?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Squallion?
Yay.
Counselor Van Hazinga?
Yes.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Counselor Zarella?
Yes.
President Kusmerik?
Yes.
Counselor Boishman? Excuse me, Counselor Boishman?
Sorry about that. Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Kucher?
Yes.
Counselor Gina Tally?
Yes.
That is unanimous.
Uh, the first three matters, uh, and I'll, I'll defer to, uh, Solicitor Pusiteri as, as necessary, but the first three matters, two thirty-two, two thirty-three, and two thirty-four twenty, all concern the New View, um, uh, the New View Affordable Housing, uh, Project, formerly DF Brown, concerning Elm Street. And this is the, uh, I believe, Mr. Solicitor, the, these are the last orders, um, uh, that are, that are aligned with what we had previously, uh, approved several weeks ago.
Yes, that's correct. Uh, Mr. President, I'm looking for the, I'm sorry, I just don't have the agenda in front of me to tell you which particular order relates to which particular issue. Uh, but suffice it to say that you have three orders before your body tonight. Uh, the order regarding Zero Elm Street is the order that would permit making the conveyance, uh, of the easement, uh, for a parking lot area to the Fitchburg art community. The second, uh, the other two orders are orders placing into conservation, uh, two additional pieces of property. I'm sure the counselors remember, uh, passing the petition for the Home Rule, um, petition. And, uh, that petition allowed the state to add additional conditions or requirements. What they did, uh, decided to do, uh, was ask for some additional land for conservation purposes. And, uh, the, um, additional, uh, items were agreed to between the Executive Office of Environmental Affairs, uh, Tom Skarowski from our Planning Department, uh, and obviously the legislator adopted, uh, the act and was signed into law. So those additional items would be, uh, necessary components, if you will, of this transaction. Thank you.
Move to approve two thirty-two twenty through two thirty-five twenty.
Second.
On a motion?
On the motion, Counsel, uh, Counselor Zarella, are you raising a point of order that we should take to, uh, do two thirty-five separately?
Uh, not as a point of order, but yes, that was going to be my point.
Uh, Counselor Squallion, would you be amenable to that?
Your.
Okay. Uh, so we'll take two thirty-two, uh, through two thirty-four twenty, um, and speaking on the motion, Counselor Boishman.
I got, I got a quick question. That's all. Who's going to enforce the, uh, conservation restrictions? Uh, and did the conservation restriction accept this?
Solicitor Pusiteri, am I correct that that would be the Conservation Commission that would be responsible for enforcing that?
Yes, sir. Uh, the Conservation, uh, is aware, accepted this, and they would be enforcing it.
Have they already voted on it, sir?
You know, I don't have that information in front of me. My understanding is that they do. Unfortunately, we don't have Mr. Skarowski with us tonight. He's, uh, involved in another meeting. And, uh, I wish I could just refer that question to him, but I can't. Uh, my understanding is that it was presented to the Conservation Commission, though I just don't have that, uh, I don't have the ability to absolutely confirm that for you, Counselor. But that's my, that's the impression that I'm under.
All right. Okay, that's it.
I can, if I just add on, onto your concern there, Conservation Commission was one hundred percent behind the project. And they, uh, would, they actually expressed interest in other land in that area too. So I would be surprised if they hadn't done it, that they wouldn't do it. But I, I would just leave it at that, sir.
Well, the only reason why I ask, the only reason why I ask these questions is, is I really don't think it was, is, I don't really think that it was a fair land of equal value. Uh, that's my problem I'm having with this whole thing. Um, I believe that there was a price higher than expected when we gave the parcel to New View. And in return, we get nothing from New View and the residents suffer. This piece of land that we get, we got, it was worth absolutely nothing, nothing at all. We tried to sell it, nobody wanted to buy it. So that's how I feel. So that's it, that's all.
Speaking on the motion, Counselor Gina Tally.
Mr. Solicitor, if this doesn't go through, does the, the Arts, uh, Housing Project proceed?
Uh, it doesn't. Uh, the, um, easement is not going to allow parking, but actual access to the building.
So the comment just made that this is, that the residents, I'm paraphrasing, got shortchanged. Um, no, what they're getting is a close to thirty million dollar investment in that area instead of a burnt-out, dilapidated building that is really driving property values up in the area. And I, and I might add, it's Ward Four, not Ward Two. Uh, thank you.
I have a motion and second, uh, to approve two thirty-two, two thirty-three, and two thirty-four twenty. We'll take this by roll call vote. Madam Clerk.
Counselor Fleming?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Squallion?
Yay.
Counselor Van Hazinga?
Yes.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Counselor Zarella?
Yes.
President Kusmerik?
Yes.
Counselor Boishman?
It'll be ten to one again. I guess no.
Counselor Kucher?
Yes.
Counselor Gina Tally?
Yes.
That is ten to one.
Motion carries. Next, two thirty-five twenty, order that the Honorable Mayor Stephen Gina Tally is authorized on behalf of the City of Fitchburg, facilitate and execute the attached Community Host Benefit Agreement with Cure Pack M A L L C, located at six six four River Street, Fitchburg.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion.
On a motion?
Motion and second to approve two thirty-five twenty. Speaking on the motion, Counselor Boishman.
On the motion, uh, I don't believe I'm going to support this at this present time because I found out today that the guy's behind on his taxes. And I'm all in favor of it as long as he gets caught up in his taxes. So I ask that we put this on hold.
Uh, Counselor, the matter is before us, and unless there is any change, we'll put this to a vote. I will ask Madam Clerk to please conduct a roll call vote.
Counselor Fleming?
I, I wanted to speak.
I apologize, Counselor Fleming. Uh, the floor is yours.
Um, is it to our city he owns the, owes these taxes?
Yes.
So this is, so I guess my question is, if we approve this, he's going to have to pay back all his taxes, uh, back taxes before this will proceed, right? Even if we vote in favor?
That is my understanding, that they have to be current, uh, on their taxes to move forward with the next step.
Can we ask?
I believe Solicitor and the mayor are talking for the moment, so I'll give them, uh, one, did you have anything further, Counselor Fleming? We can, we can go back to you once.
I don't want to, um.
Solicitor Pusiteri, there's been a, a couple of questions just around, um, uh, being current on the taxes and, uh, whether or not before the, uh, agreement is actually executed, does the, um, uh, does the owner of the building have to become current before the, uh, agreement can be executed?
Uh, so I think it's a very valid question. I'm happy to address that. The, uh, owner of the building is not who the applicant is. The applicant would be a tenant of the owner of the building. Um, the, uh, uh, the, the owner of the building has already had a host agreement approved for cultivation in that building. Uh, this cultivated, this agreement is for a manufacturing process where they actually will take the, the product and they'll manufacture it into some other good. Uh, uh, respectfully, this applicant isn't barred by proceeding before your body as a result of outstanding taxes due. But now that, uh, Counselor Boishman has made me aware of an outstanding issue, um, be more than happy to call the owner and, and let him know that that was discussed during the evening and take out, take some steps to get that money collected for the city. Thank you.
Counselor Fleming, does that answer your question?
Um, sort of.
I'm sorry, and I was distracted, Counselor, about your question, if you don't mind repeating it.
So if we approve this, we're guaranteed he will pay those taxes? Or is he just going to be notified that this was brought up at this meeting? And that there, he is delinquent on his taxes? Will, will he have to pay up?
So am I correct in understanding, Solicitor Pusiteri, that we're talking, it's two different, the person, um, alleged to be behind on taxes is, is the property owner, the person who's before us this evening that the order pertains to is a tenant. Um, and so we'd be holding the tenants accountable for the landlords', um, the, the landlord's taxes.
For, uh, that, that's a fair characterization of it. That's what you would be doing. Uh, I would simply add that I actually recently had a conversation with the owner, who actually also owes an outstanding legal fee on another host agreement. And I received, uh, an absolute assurance that that was coming in. So I would be, uh, I would also like to, uh, just address that issue with him on, on the taxes. And it, there wouldn't be a Counselor Fleming's question, uh, there wouldn't be a guarantee that the, uh, there would be a collection of taxes. What there would be is the process of the tax collection process, uh, which would include, um, interest penalties and, um, eventually land court. However, there's a clear intention to put that, uh, building to a use in the marijuana industry. There are two enterprises currently, uh, expecting to, uh, operate their business in that location. I think it would be difficult, uh, to see them giving that all up because they just can't pay the real estate taxes. But, um, I, I hope that that addressed your, your concern. We could.
So the, the owner of the property will benefit because he has a tenant in there. So the owner who's not paying in his taxes or is not up to date on his taxes is going to benefit either way, even if he goes to land court because he's got a tenant in there.
Uh, if he goes to land court, uh, yeah, so he could, uh, to, to, to your point, he could collect, uh, rents, uh, during the entire process. Um, and it does take time to go to the land court and actually take possession of real estate. So, uh, yes, there is, there is a provision, uh, to that extent. They're also going to, so that, 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 I can answer your question that way. I might, might, I'm actually surprised to hear that this particular, uh, building is behind on its real estate taxes. And, uh, so I, I don't know, maybe it's even an oversight of something or something else is happening.
We have a motion. We can't place this one on hold, right? Because there's already a motion on the table?
We have a motion, um.
It could be with.
It could, it could be withdrawn, uh, Counselor, but I, I have others looking to speak, um.
Okay, okay.
Counselor Gina Tally?
You know, what I'm about to say is going to sound like I don't care that this guy is allegedly, Counsel, Mr. President, you said alleged, and you're correct. The attorney doesn't even know this. With all due respect to one of our colleagues, they just throw out this pumpkin bomb that the guy doesn't have his taxes paid and current. I have no documentation or testimony from any city official corroborating that fact. I'm not saying the counselor's making it up, but I don't like the fact that we get this pumpkin bomb right before we vote. And now if the attorney isn't aware of it, now we're going to hold it, now there's questions. I mean, I, I, I'm at the point right now where I don't know, I don't, I, I'm not going to believe what was just said unless I have concrete evidence. And I don't know why the guy may be behind. I, I, I have no idea what's going on. But, you know, it's unfortunate that the council may be inclined to hold something based on an allegation that no one in the position of the city, either present here tonight or involved in these discussions, knew anything about that. So, I mean, I, I'm a little agitated about it because it's like, you know, what? The, the, this is a bad process where it just, it just gets thrown out there and now it derails the whole thing. So this poor guy who's a tenant is going to be impacted because of what the owner allegedly is doing. And we don't even know if the owner is, you know, delinquent can mean a lot of things. Is it three months? Is it three years? What is it? But I can tell you this, if there are taxes owed, he's certainly not going to be able to pay his taxes if he doesn't have this tenant do what they're going to do. So I'm, I'm angry because if I vote yes on this tonight, it may be conceived by some members of the public that I'm looking the other way about someone not paying their taxes. I don't know if they've paid their taxes. And the fact that you don't know, Mr. Attorney, you know, I, let's just say it this way, I take your, I, you know, the fact that you don't know has more weight on me than the allegation. Okay, so the council can do what they want and hold it, but I, I, I'm not escaping the fact that the guy, the person that's impacted by this has nothing to do with this, nothing. Um, and I would trust that the city, if they know that this is a fact, which no one here can tell me it is, will pursue all avenues. And I know Ms. Zervantes in the Treasurer's Office, she's a bull with this stuff. Okay, as evidenced by the, the hundreds of thousands she's collected in back taxes in several years. So I guess for me, I'm not for holding it. I don't want to, um, impact this gentleman's business venture because of his landlord. And now that it's out there in the public, I would trust that the city will attack it. But again, I have no information on the dates, the amounts, and, and, and the story, nothing. And I'm not going to vote and hold it tonight. I'm not going to play this game. If the city knows that and they knew it, then the information should be present and we have these discussions. I'm not going to take it on the word of someone who's not in the city departments. Thank you.
Counselor Kucher, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I have to, I have to agree with, uh, Counselor Gina Tally. Um, you know, there's, there's no way that I am going to stop this, uh, from being, um, at least my vote being, uh, to approve this. Um, you know, look, we don't have any information. There's nothing that, you know, can be quantified at this point in time. And again, just like Counselor Gina Tally said, we, we don't have the, we don't have any information before us. So I'm going to approve this.
Next, we have Counsel Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I, I would agree with, uh, Counselors Gina Tally and, and Kucher. I, I think it would be, uh, a grave error to hold a tenant responsible for something that, that the land owner, the property owner would be responsible for. It's not the tenant's responsibility to make sure that the, the person he's renting from is current on his taxes. Um, and I, I just think that's, um, you know, not something that's before us and, and I, I will vote to approve two thirty-five twenty.
Speaking for the second time, Counsel Boishman.
I just want to say something. I didn't do this to cause trouble. I only found out the information this afternoon. So I had no time to call the other counselors, number one. Number two, I wouldn't make up a story like that. It's not my intent to hurt that guy that owns that building because we gave him permission a year ago to start selling product too. I talked to the city solicitor earlier this morning. I only found out later on in the afternoon. I'm not trying to stop it, but remember one thing, one thing only I tell this counsel. When somebody else comes in front of us and they're behind on our taxes, we should look the other way too and say, okay, we'll give you another shot, even though you're going to do it. Because that's what we're saying here. Counselor Fleming is right. He's going to rent the building. But if you, he already talked to Vinnie, the, the city solicitor, that he was behind on his host agreement and he was going to get his money, why can't we hold on to this for two weeks and let Vinnie talk to him? And go from there. What's the big deal? What's the hurry? You still got to go to the state no matter how you look at it. So what's the hurry? I don't understand it. Let Vinnie do his job, let him call him up and ask. That's all. I only found out this afternoon. I'm not making it up. Why would I do that? Ruin somebody's business or anything like that. I don't get paid for that.
I, I, I would say that if it was the property owner who was applying, uh, who was, who was the one specifically mentioned in this host benefit agreement, I would feel differently than I do now, but it is not. There are two different entities. The property owner and the business who's before us for the order this evening. Uh, those two are different, and I'm not going to hold the tenant accountable for the alleged sins of the property owner. Uh, and so, well, I appreciate what Counselor Boishman, um, has said. I, I, I don't believe that we should hold one accountable for the other. Uh, with that, I also have Counselor Van Hazinga. The floor is yours.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Um, I think if there is a situation where the property owner hasn't paid the property taxes, I do find that troubling. Um, because enforcing tax compliance, uh, is a lengthy process. It's not an easy process. But the city does have certain moments where they can compel compliance when giving approvals for different things. So this, I think this is something important to consider. And I think this is a moment where we can compel the property owner to comply and pay their tax bill, especially if there are outstanding, uh, payments to be made in association with a previous host agreement. Uh, one question I would have for the, the city solicitor is, um, will this use require a new planning board special permit? Or will it be operating under the existing special permit?
It's, uh, already obtained a second, uh, special permit.
Did they have a certificate of tax compliance at that time when it was issued?
I'm not aware that they did.
Isn't that a?
I just want to review my, um, I've tried to get an update from the Planning Department and I, if I just have one second, sir.
Okay, sure, because I know with the issuance of a special permit, that's a standard condition that the applicant is, uh, required to provide a, a certificate of task compliance that shows they're, they're current on all of their tax bills or are rented into a, a tax payment agreement. Um, so that could be something that could be a conditional, uh, approval of part, as part of the special permit. That's so the special permit doesn't go into effect until that's, you know, obtained. Or it could have been issued at the time. I don't know it, what time the special permit was issued. I know it was initially issued some years ago for the initial manufacturing use. Um, if the second use is a more recent, uh, use, I'm not sure. I don't know.
The second use is a more recent use and they would have gone in front of the planning board fairly recently. I would just, uh, Counselor, to your point, uh, your city code, uh, does, um, uses the terminology that licensing authorities in the City of Fitchburg are authorized to deny an application for the renewal or transfer, uh, to revoke or suspend any license or permit for a delinquent taxpayer. Um, and, uh, to some of the earlier, uh, remarks that were made from some of the other counselors, uh, the delinquent taxpayer, it's just not the person before. So if we were to lot, rely on that, uh, section of our code, I don't think that that section really meets on all fours. Um, but I think that, um, I can certainly convey the sentiment of the council tonight and certainly your sentiment uh, that, uh, that there is a concern that there are delinquent taxes on this building that we are working so hard to license, uh, and get up and running.
And I will say, it is a little bit of a difficult situation having this, um, issue come to light at the last moment, uh, not hearing about it or being able to verify it or to, to have any, you know, in-depth analysis of, of what the situation is having this come to light. Um, so it may be admitted to have this become part of our standard practice that before these agreements are presented, that we, we have, uh, ensure that they are. that before these agreements are presented, that we, we have uh ensured that they are current on property taxes and there are outstanding legal bills. Um, you mentioned that there were outstanding legal bills, was this due to the first host agreement?
The first host agree, yes, sir, the first host agreement legal fee um is outstanding. And I did have a recent contact with them, uh, and I had received assurances that the payment was, was, was forthcoming.
How long is that overdue?
Uh, yeah, to say that there, there's a timeframe for them to be overdue, we've been waiting for uh commencement date on many of the, the um companies, however, the commencement dates haven't been forthcoming. And uh, so we've been contacting them and trying to get the money in.
Was the, the money due upon um commence of uh signing of the host agreement or was it on commencement of operations?
Commencement of operations is when the, uh, is when the majority of them. The uh, the, but however, uh, there is no specific written language in the agreement on the exact due date. So the op, the mode of operation has been to allow the, the business to be up and running before they get hit with the fee, uh, which is the three thousand dollar fee. Uh, my new mode of operation has recently changed where once your, once your body approves the order, and this is again, it's not a license that we're giving them, we're, we're ordering, we're issuing an order authorizing the mayor to execute a host agreement. Once your body issues that order uh or provides that authorization, uh, my uh, it, my uh, uh, mode of operation now is to contact the uh, the uh, the host, the, the company and have them uh be made aware that the fee is due and that the mayor is ready to sign the agreement. We have been hesitant to put um, uh, city action uh ants of money because there's been a lot of pressure from Boston to suggest that municipalities are misusing their authority to, uh, if you will, shake down these companies to get some money, and that has led us to a number of different avenues, uh, which included um postponing collection of fees until commencement date and even the long, the uh fairly lengthy uh amendment process that we went through just recently.
Okay, thank you, and I, um, I will say it just, you know, I would be much more comfortable if the property owner was current in what was due to the city and property taxes and the, and the host agreement for the, the previous use. Um, I don't want to get in the way of a business that's coming to the city, especially with this coming to light in the last, the very last hour of, you know, approving this agreement. Uh, but I think we should work better in the future to ensure that these property owners um are updated. Thank you.
And to Counselor Van Hazinga's point, it, it has been past practice that they wouldn't actually hit this body until tax compliance is um certified. So I, I, I think this is an unusual circumstance for this body to, to be in this uh situation. That said, I wanna confirm um that I heard this correctly, Mr. Bustery, and I, because I, I believe this is an important point of that where, where authorizing that the mayor can uh execute this agreement. Um, he could uh not execute and authorize uh until tax compliance is met, is that correct?
That's correct, sir, and that's a, that's a good point, and the way you articulated would be, he could maintain that authority at some period of time in the future. It also, your, uh, your order would also authorize him to take any and all other acts necessary and helpful, which perhaps we could see collection of taxes would be part of that, sir.
Uh, with that, I have uh Counselor Schultz.
Yeah, I was just gonna ask uh it, it to uh Counselor Van Ha, Hazinga's point, uh, I was gonna ask the city solicitor, is there any tie between the uh, the tenant and the, and, and the owner, are they in business together? Or is he, is just, is he just gonna be a tenant of the building and they have no business uh, business tie at all?
I, I am not aware of any business tie at all of their connection, other than the address.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
And Counselor Dina Tally speaking for the second time.
Yeah, I, I just wanna make it clear that I did not accuse the counselor of making it up. He said I did, I didn't. I said it's an allegation at the last minute that no one involved in this has any knowledge of. And that's not how I'm gonna operate. All right, now, I've been here fourteen years, I've never seen this before, so again, what drives me nuts is the public watching this. This is not how we do things. This is a very, this is a rarity. And as the president articulated with the attorney just now, we are allowing the mayor to execute an agreement. The mayor doesn't have to do it. We're just giving him the approval to go ahead and execute one whenever he's ready to. So the mayor who's on the call tonight, you, you know, I'll, I'll ask him point blank, or the city solicitor, will you, will you be entering into an agreement with this person if there happens to be a delinquency in taxes? And again, I don't know what that means in terms of a timeline. The guy could be behind a few months or a few years, I don't know, not that I, it makes it better, but I, I don't know what delinquency is, if it even exists, so this has never happened before, so I don't even wanna call it an oversight. But the fact that the councils are coun, some councils have made light of this, and that there's some concerns, are, are you gentlemen prepared to, to, to research this before entering into any agreement?
Yeah, absolutely, I mean, uh, I, I, I think what the first thing I'm gonna do is contact the property owner uh, eh, tomorrow morning, and I will try to find uh, uh, get a better understanding as to uh, how much is outstanding, I can find that out from the Treasurer's Office and find out what his intentions are to pay the payments.
And, and, and this, and this person has gone through two licensing rounds, right? For the first, for, for the um, is that what you said earlier, they had to go through the planning board twice, uh?
So this property has gone through the planning board twice.
And so, as Counselor Van Hazinga said, and he's correct, because I recall this, when we, when we had the bylaws, you have to have a certificate of tax compliance. So knowing the planning board as well as I do, and this is where I'm getting to the whole terminology of delinquency, did this guy just fall behind in his taxes in the last few months? Because I would hate to think that the planning board would authorize this property owner, this venture, twice, knowing that there was no compliance on the taxes, although that's not the person applying, it's, it's this tenant. So, does that matter, Mr. Bustetary? It, i- is the certif, certification of tax compliance on the building not necessarily from the tenant?
Our city code uh requires a focus on the delinquent taxpayer. So the licensing authority for the City of Pittsburgh are hereby authorized to deny an, any application for or renewal or transfer of, or to revoke or suspend any license or permit of a delinquent taxpayer.
And they didn't, and they didn't twice.
Yes, and in fact, um, correct.
And so, a- again, without the planning board here, I, 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 I don't, I, I'd like to think that they didn't just, just, just comb it over. So my point is, is that until we get additional information, I understand the argument, we don't have to rush through it, but the central piece of this is the person that this is impacting is not the property owner, it's the tenant. And the, the mayor is on the call, you're on the call, all we're doing is, is moving it forward for you to execute an agreement. You don't have to execute the agreement. Our yes vote here tonight is not to approve an agreement, there is no agreement, you gotta go execute one, correct?
Correct.
So, that, that's where the safeguard is for me. You gentlemen have been doing this quite a while, I would like to think that if this guy owes tens of thousands of dollars in back taxes and he's been thumbing his nose at the city for seven years, he won't enter an agreement with them, but I don't think that's the case. The fact that he's gone through two licensing hearings and this is news to everybody. So again, I really am cautious about the word delinquency, what does that mean? So a- again, I'm gonna reiterate, I'm not voting against this tonight because all we're voting to do is to allow you to enter an agreement. If you enter into an agreement with someone who owes several years of back taxes, well then shame on you. But I don't think you're gonna do that. Thank you.
I have a motion, uh, I have Counselor Zarella, the floor is yours.
I just want to very briefly note that none of this was my intention when I pointed out that we should probably take this item separately, I just thought they were two separate subject matters and should be addressed distinctly. Uh, I will also be voting in favor of this.
Uh, I have a motion and second, we'll do this by roll call vote, Madam Clerk. You're muted.
All right, Counselor Fleming.
I'm reluctant, but I will vote to approve.
That's a yes, correct?
Yes.
Thank you, Counselor Green.
No.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Counselor Squalia.
Yay.
Counselor Van Hazinga.
Yes.
Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
Counselor Zarella.
Yes.
President Kusmeric.
Yes.
Counselor Boishman.
Nay.
I'm sorry, was that nay or yea, sir?
No.
Thank you, Counselor Kucher.
Yes.
Counselor Dina Tally.
Yes.
That is nine to two.
Motion carries. Next, we have um ordinance two thirty-six twenty, an ordinance amending the Pittsburgh City Code, Chapter one forty-seven dash sewers, uh incorporating amendments made in the Legislative Affairs Committee meeting on October thirteenth, two thousand twenty as outlined in the enclosed ordinance, reference petition two oh four twenty, uh, and this is its first reading. I ask that we send it to its uh first and second reading uh in order it be advertised.
Second, uh, so moved.
Second.
I have a motion uh and second, uh, speaking on the motion, unless there is any objection, we'll take this um by unanimous consent. It is approved and sent to its first and second reading and advertised. Uh, and lastly, we have a, a single petition, two thirty-seven twenty, Counselor Andrew Van Hazinga to eliminate the allowance of on-street parking on the eastern side of Day Street between Main and Cherry Streets in the area of thirty-five Day Street excluding existing spaces in the area of two fifty-five Main as previously authorized in council petition one seventy-three uh twenty. And uh, I see Counselor uh Van Hazinga has requested for suspension of the rules on uh this item, is that correct, sir?
Yes.
Second.
I have a motion and uh second, we'll take this by roll call vote uh on suspension, Madam Clerk.
Counselor Fleming.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Counselor Squalia.
Yay.
Counselor Van Hazinga.
Yes.
Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
Counselor Zarella.
Yes.
President Kusmeric.
Yes.
Counselor Boishman.
Yes.
Counselor Kucher.
Yes.
Counselor Dina Tally.
Yes.
That is unanimous.
The matter is now before the body.
Move to approve two thirty-seven twenty.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve two thirty-seven twenty, speaking on the motion, take this by roll call vote, one more time, Madam Clerk.
Counselor Fleming.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Counselor Squalia.
Yay.
Counselor Van Hazinga.
Yes.
Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
Counselor Zarella.
Yes.
President Kusmeric.
Yes.
Counselor Boishman.
Yes.
Counselor Kucher.
Yes.
Counselor Dina Tally.
Yes.
That is unanimous.
Motion carries, and that concludes uh this evening's agenda.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and second uh to adjourn, we'll take this by unanimous uh consent, unless there is any objection, seeing no objections. We are adjourned, thank you, counselors, and good night to our viewing audience.